There's a big like.
It is now six ten and we're just ten minutes past our starting time, but I know that everybody, you know, is all primed and everything. May I introduce myself to maybe somebody who doesn't know me? My name is Bertha Underhill and I am your Calaveras County Water District, excuse me, District Three Director. I am just thrilled to be part of CCWD and I am now in my fourth term, third year of my, of this term. And so next year I'll be, you know, my term will be up and guess what?
What?
I'll be running again.
No.
So anyway, welcome, welcome to our beautiful White Pines Park. And half of the audience here belongs to CCWD, but the other half knows that the park does in fact belong to CCWD. And we wouldn't have such a beautiful place if it weren't for the wonderful White Pines Park Committee. And the park committee has been with us since nineteen seventy-seven, something like that.
I've been part of it for eighteen years, so I don't know what happened before me.
Okay, Jimmy Capa has been there for eighteen years, but I remember stories of Jim Carlin and Bob Harris dragging all of the debris out of the areas so that we could have a beautiful park. And we certainly, from the people who own it, CCWD, we've never been so appreciative because I'm sure that you heard many years ago, they talked about putting wires up to block this place off because we couldn't find anybody or we didn't have the force to keep it clean. So here came the beautiful White Pines Park Committee to help us. And God do we appreciate them and all of you who are part of the park department or the park committee here tonight. You know, I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. And if there's ever anything you need, just call me and I'll call Michael. As I say, I'm happy to represent you and I have my card in case anybody doesn't know where I am. Now, I was up in Camp Connel, but now I've moved down into Arnold. So I'm closer than you think, right behind Dollar General parking lot. So if there's anything that you want to know that goes on in the parking lot, just ask me. You know, I'm just kidding. Okay, let's get down to business because I know you've given up your evening, your lovely evening to come here about the park and CCWD plans. And so may I introduce our general manager, Michael Nickler.
All right. Thanks, folks. Really appreciate everybody taking the time to be here tonight. And we have some folks that are live streaming online too. We wanted to try to make this as accessible as possible. And we've gotten used to that. We've gotten very good at that. So really, really glad though to see familiar faces up until a couple of years ago. I lived in Arnold, started my family here. It's always going to be a very special place to me. But because I work for Bertha now, moved down the hill to Murphy's to be a little closer to the office. But really happy to be here. I think, well, first I'm going to start with introducing the CCWD team that's here. Behind all of the logistics here tonight is Rebecca Hitchcock, our executive assistant clerk to the board and many other hats. We also have Damon Wykoff, our director of operations. Jessica Self is our external affairs manager. And Brad Arnold behind Jessica is our water resources manager. And I also should mention Ada, Jessica's daughter. She's, she's part of the team too. The, so you're going to hear from all of these folks on different topics. We're going to cover a lot of information tonight. We have some handouts for the folks that are here and for anybody online or anybody that views this later, feel free to contact us and we would be happy to provide some more of the materials that we brought with us tonight and make that available to everybody. We are going to get into the drought, but we're going to save that for a little bit later into the program. So I know that's on the forefront of everybody's mind. If it's not, it should be. So we'll talk about that, but we'll cover a bunch of other stuff first. One of the things I wanted to touch on before I hand it off is just how much change we've experienced at CCWD in my two and a half years there now. It has been, it has been constant transition and constant change, both internally and as a result of external forces. We've got a lot of staff turnover of the nine of us at CCWD that make up the management team. There's only three that have been at CCWD more than, more than a few years. So there's just been a tremendous amount of turnover. We've been really fortunate to bring in really good people to fill those positions, some of whom you will hear from later tonight. So we're really lucky in that respect. But that transition is always challenging for an organization. And that's something we've, at the staff level as well, not just among the management team, we've had a lot of longtime employees that have just been, you know, part of the fabric of the district for decades, have retired and moved on. Those are really difficult people to replace. So it's, it's been just a constant series of changes really since we started. I think my first year, I kept saying that I'm almost to the point where things are going to settle down and we're going to settle in. And I've stopped, I've stopped expecting that to ever happen. I think I've learned that it's probably going to be a constant series of changes and, and we just have to adapt to those changes as an organization. And I think, I think we have. A part of that adapting to those changes was a strategic plan that we have copies of for folks. We didn't hand them out to everybody. We do have copies if anyone's interested. This is our, this is CCWD's seventy-fifth year. And with all of that transition that we've been experiencing and in light of the fact that seventy-five is a, is a milestone, that nobody here has reached, by the way, I can tell by the look of it. So it's, but seventy-five is a milestone that we wanted to, we want to celebrate this year. So you'll probably be hearing more about it over the course of the year. And we want to, we felt like it was a really good time to take a look at the organization and how we're doing and how we're handling all this change and, and chart a course for the, for the future. So this was a really valuable process. Strategic plans are, I think, just as valuable as, you know, going through the process as the, as the final document is at the end of the day. So from the board, who was really engaged in the, in the, in the process, all the way through the organization, all levels of staff, partner agencies that participated in it. It was a really, really good process for us. And I think it turned out to be a really good document that will help us deal with bears that show up to town hall meetings.
Yeah, there's a bear there.
There he is.
There's a bear on top of the dumpster. All right.
Over here.
Speaking of constantly adapting to change.
Oh, yeah, it is. Now, that's just one of my constituents. It's like, wow.
It's one of our, one of our customers. Yeah, constituent for Marita and Bertha. All right. That's exciting for us that are here. For those of you online, maybe not so much.
How big are you? Isn't that something?
For our seventy-fifth anniversary, we got a new mascot. That's a bear. Continual improvement program plan for CCWD is a great way to put it because that's, that was a big part of the focus where we ended up with, I think it was nine different overarching long-term strategic goals with a whole lot of information underneath each one of those, including a new mission statement, a new, a vision statement that the district didn't have before, a statement of our core values, that I think, again, just the process of developing all of that really kind of focused us on what the district's core functions are and charting a course for us for the next five years. So now we have this document as staff is dealing with new issues that arise as they do all the time. Or even, you know, some of our longstanding issues that we always deal with. And our friend is back. We have a document that, that was developed through that participatory process that the board has adopted unanimously, that, that serves as sort of a guide, a guide for us as we navigate those issues. So it's a, it's not just, it wasn't just that the process was valuable and then it becomes something that stays on the shelf. Part of our mandate as staff is to make sure that this is something that we operationalize, that shows up in our staff reports to the board, that shows up on a regular basis as we're, as we're dealing with issues. So it, it will be, it will be a part of our, our day-to-day language going forward.
This guy's coming back.
These people should be walking up to him. Those are children.
This is like, uh.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, that's why we have a fire chief here. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so we have extra copies of the strategic plan for anybody that's interested. It's great. And it's, and it's been, it's, it's a really valuable document for the district to have at a time where we're trying to grapple with the, the constant state of change that we're in, but also recognize our history and make sure that we're grounded in what our core priorities are. Another kind of big transition and one of the things that we address a lot in, in the strategic plan is the constant need to upgrade our infrastructure and how managing a district that is as geographically dispersed as CCWD is, six different drinking water systems that are completely isolated from each other, that are spread throughout the county, thirteen different wastewater systems that are isolated from each other and spread all throughout the county. That's a really difficult operational challenge from the valley floor up to Camp, Camp Connel and West Point and Valley Springs and Copper and all, all the communities in between. And a lot of infrastructure that was built, you know, that's, that's towards the end of its useful life, keeping up with the investments in infrastructure that have to be made, how we prioritize those investments, a lot of that. This, this will help guide, guide us through a lot of that. And then we also just adopted a new five-year capital improvement program that identifies what those priority infrastructure projects are. And it's a more ambitious program than what we've seen historically because of the condition of the infrastructure. So we're probably going to get close to a hundred million dollars in infrastructure investments over that five-year period of time if we're successfully able to implement all the projects that we're on the list. That's a, that would be, that would represent a significant increase in construction activity for CCWD compared to what we're used to. So figuring out how to finance that, making sure that we have the bandwidth and staff to handle that much police construction is a big part of our effort this year. Because the, the projects really, the ones that are identified on that list are ones that really can't wait much longer. So we really have the obligation to make sure that it gets done. So those are really, kind of at the high level of the organization, those are really big recent developments. I should have acknowledged from the get-go, I apologize, that Supervisor Kyle Way is here and I know you all know Marita, but thank you for coming, Marita and Chief Johnson. Appreciate you being here. And I also want to, one of my talking points is the same as Bertha's, because here at the, at White Pines, as Bertha mentioned, this is a CCWD-owned storage reservoir and the property here is owned by CCWD, but it would not be the, the really valuable asset to the community that it is if it wasn't for the volunteers that run it. Some of you are here today, but the White Pines Park Committee does just a phenomenal job of operating and maintaining the park. They're, they're out here, you know, taking the trash out and everything from installing new, new assets like the pickleball court that went in recently and the playground that isn't that old, to just maintaining the stuff that's here and making sure that the trash gets taken out and the bathrooms get cleaned, which was an ordeal during the pandemic, as Jenny knows. All of that is an enormous volunteer effort. And, and it, it just wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for, for the volunteers. So can't thank you guys enough for that and, and encourage anyone else who's listening that isn't volunteering for the White Pines Park Committee. If you have any available time and you're, and, and you treasure the, the park and the lake as much as all of us do, consider, consider that as a volunteer opportunity. And also Chris Self is here who has been involved in the softball park, softball ball field over there on the other side of the lake, which is also CCWD property, but CCWD does not operate. It's, it's also a completely volunteer-run organization and, and facility. The maintenance, the upkeep, all of it is done by volunteers. And, you know, we just can't, it just wouldn't be here. It wouldn't, it wouldn't exist if it wasn't for the effort of those volunteers. So thank you, Chris, and everyone else who's involved. CCWD by the way, is planning on fielding a team in the tournament later this month and winning the tournament later this month. Under, under the tutelage of Coach Jessica, we are training, training hard for the softball tournament, which is, I think those are the, the main points that I had. We have, like I said, a lot of information we're going to cover today. And I believe Jessica is up next. Didn't know. Oh, man, that was my one job, which is to not screw up the order of things. Damon's going to come up next, talk about some of our projects.
Good evening, everybody. Before I start talking about projects, I want to give everybody an update on disinfection byproducts. I'm sure all of you are aware that CCWD sent out a notice in about January, the first, the beginning of the year, that we had exceeded disinfection byproducts compliance for one of our sample sites for the fourth quarter of 2020. So bear with me, ask questions. This information's quite dense. So I'm just going to kind of walk everybody through what this means, what it is, what we're doing to resolve it and how we're, how we look moving forward. So disinfection byproducts, what are they? So they are byproducts of the treatment process. So when chlorine reacts with organics in the raw supply, leaves, leaf litter, plant matter, essentially carbon, they create what are called disinfection byproducts. And in our case, they're trihalomethanes and haloacetic acids. So each of these are thought, if, if ingested over long periods of time, years, in high volumes to cause cancer, cause negative health effects. The, the verdict's still out, but there's, we, we have the utmost caution. And the state has issued maximum compliance levels for each of these disinfection byproducts. So how those are calculated are on a running annual average for each sample site. So CCWD in the Ebbets Pass service area has four sample sites. One of those sample sites, over a four-quarter running annual average, exceeded the maximum contaminant level for haloacetic acids by one part per billion. And so these are measured in parts per billion. The MCL is sixty parts per billion. The running annual average for this sample site is sixty-one currently. So how do we address this issue? Like I said, disinfection byproducts are formed when chlorine reacts with carbon. So there's some things that make them grow. Water age is the key component that makes disinfection byproducts grow. So what CCWD did initially is we took samples directly from the treatment facility. We wanted to see what kind of results we were getting directly out of the plant. Because if there was a change that we can make at the treatment facility, we could go ahead and implement that then. What we found is that the results are very low at the treatment plant. And so they tend, these haloacetic acids tend to grow throughout the distribution system, which corresponds to our sample site exceedance, which is in the furthest point of our distribution system associated with the water of greatest age. So where are we at now? We are still not in compliance with this one sample site. We've, we made some adjustments to the distribution system to reduce the water age overall, and it didn't really seem to have an impact. And that was, I would say, in March, April. We isolated different portions of the distribution system to try to focus the oldest water through the system to try to essentially distribute it so that it could all be used evenly. It didn't work very well. So we went back to the drawing board and we dropped tank levels. So we reduced, we reduced some of the supply. And we also then made different adjustments to the valving of the distribution system. And it seems that we were having a positive impact to the levels of haloacetic acids. So with, in the end of June, the beginning of July, we took samples throughout the distribution system after we made these adjustments. And we saw results drop by fifteen to twenty parts per billion. Those samples were not regulated, meaning we didn't report that information to the state. We, we've taken compliance samples and we're awaiting the results. But we anticipate with the drop of the fifth quarter sample and with the addition of this new sample, we will, we will come back into compliance. It's important to understand also though, that we're talking in parts per billion and many water systems throughout California treat surface water with organics with chlorine. Chlorine is a requirement. It's a measurable disinfectant. We can see if there's available chlorine in the water supply, we can understand that it's available to treat anything that should get into the pipe. If dirt, debris gets into the pipe, that chlorine can react with any bacteria or virus that could potentially be in that soil and inactivate it. So it's really, yeah, go ahead.
Just quick. So you're saying chlorine is probably one of the best products that you could use at this point. Are there any others that are, be it looked at?
So there are, yeah. So it is, it's really cheap and it's efficient and it's effective and it lasts throughout the system. One thing that we were looking at, it doesn't really make sense, it's really expensive, is UV disinfection with peroxide. So we use hydrogen peroxide, which is, is pretty dangerous in high concentrations for staff. And then we would still have to dose a measurable chlorine residual. Another option is what are called chloramines, which is a process of chlorination. So the water supply now has what's called free chlorine in it, meaning whatever demand the supply had in the treatments, you know, the raw water coming out of the lake going through the filters has a demand. So if you dose five parts per million and the residual you're left with is two, you have a demand of three. So that's what we do now. So we have a measurable residual directly proportional to the amount of chlorine we inject into the system. It's, like I said, it's effective, it's cheap, it's easy to understand. Chloramines are a relationship between chlorine and ammonia. And so what tends to happen is you can create severe odor, similar to cat pee, if you don't have that chlorine to ammonia ratio right in your water supply. And so it, it doesn't really have a measurable residual. It has what's called a total chlorine residual, which is a mixture of the demand and what's available to treat any critters should get into the pipeline. That, that's really difficult to understand and it's, and it's expensive to transition. Chloramines by nature are cheap, but to go from free chlorine to chlorine or to chloramines would be, would, would be an expensive process. So that's why we looked at the treatment facility first and we saw if we can reduce water age, it'll be the most efficient, cost-effective and safest. And so that's what we're looking to do. We feel confident that this next round of samples that come back will drop us at this one sample site below that maximum contaminant level. We'll be back in compliance. I want to highlight the point though, that it doesn't mean disinfection byproducts go away. They're still there in very small, at very small levels. So haloacetic acids, and that is the, they have a MCL of sixty parts per billion. That's the one we are out of compliance for. And then total trihalomethanes have a maximum contaminant level of eighty parts per billion and we're in compliance with those across the board. So are there any other questions about the disinfection byproducts?
I'm just wondering about the, the wooden tanks, if they're contributing to any of this?
That's a great question. Yes. Yeah, sorry. So the question was, what about the fact that we have wooden tanks out in the distribution system? And does that have an effect on the prevalence of disinfection byproducts? And the answer is yes. Obviously, when you have a redwood tank, you have a heck of a lot of organics that are reacting to the chlorine. So we, so when we received notice that we were out of compliance for the sample site, we developed a corrective action plan. And the first step was understand how they're forming in the system. The second step was develop some short-term, cheap solutions to resolve the, the problem. And the third is to replace the redwood tanks.
You were talking about that for years.
Right, yeah. So it definitely has an impact. The, like I said, water age, more organics, free chlorine, more disinfection byproducts. So the district is in process. We have awarded both the erection, we have the, we have a, a project to replace five redwood tanks through the Ebbets Pass service area. We've awarded two aspects of the project. One is for the erection of the steel, their glass-lined steel tanks that we're going to use to replace the redwood tanks. And the other aspect of the project is all the site work. Two different phases, they'll happen together. So the, the project has been awarded. We anticipate, we have a pre-construction meeting next Tuesday on the sixteenth, or actually Monday on the sixteenth, at the site. So we're going to, we're going to start with our tank furthest out in the distribution system. It's called our Big Trees Tank Eight. And we are going to meet onsite with both contractors and work to replace that this September. We plan currently to replace a tank we call the Heather Tank in Forest Meadows this construction season also. However, we are having, I think most folks are aware that we're having issues with material supply availability. So a lot of projects are really struggling to get off the ground because the lead time for materials is, is excessive.
What are we talking, number of redwood tanks here in Ebbets Pass?
So we have six. This project's going to replace five. We'll still be left with one, intended for us to replace. We have two tanks at what we call our Big Trees Four and Five Site. That will be replaced with one tank. We'll consolidate the volume of both of those tanks into one single tank. So we hope to start the Heather Tank this construction season. At this point, it's unlikely. So that will push four tanks into next construction season, which would start April, May-ish, depending on weather.
But, you know, and now this is legitimate. We are working or we are, have plans rather than just talk about it. We have been talking about it, as you all know, for years.
So that will happen next summer?
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, sorry. When we're, when, when do we anticipate replacing the tank on Fling Court? And, and I said that will happen next summer.
So when we're compliant, say with haloacetic acids, what does that mean as far as how healthy the water is to drink for consumption?
So the question is, when we are compliant with haloacetic acids, what, what does that mean for overall, the overall health of, of those that consume it? Does it still mean the water is safe, potable and healthy to use? And the answer is yes. So essentially, I think all of us are aware, we're drinking snowmelt. And, and that's, that's part of the issue is, is that the water is so pure, the, the organic, the carbon is the only thing available. the organic, the carbon is the only thing available to remove, and treatment facilities really can't remove it effectively. Um, and, and with the size of the distribution system exacerbates the disinfection byproducts problem. So what really, um, a syst, a system of this size, you're not gonna see, uh, you're gonna see more water use generally. It's gonna be in a city and you're gonna have a lot of water flowing through those pipes. The water age is gonna be much younger. And so the challenge for us is how to reduce water age without wasting water, and especially in light of the situation that we're all in with the drought, and how to, to make sure we stay compliant with, with that, that maximum contaminant level. I will tell you, most of those four sample sites fl, uh, range between the thirty and the forty to forty-five range in terms of level at all times. Um, so, and really, if this were a, a direct critical public health and safety risk, um, the, the bells and the whistles all go off. And staff, uh, we do everything in our power to notify folks when we have an issue. Um, you know, it makes me think of boil water advisories. Whenever we have a water main break or a water line break that's uncontrolled and we have to isolate the pipe in order to just keep everybody safe from all the water blowing out of the ground, we have to issue a boil water advisory. So we do door tags, we do direct notice, we do reverse phone calls, anything in our power to make sure everybody's aware that there's an issue. And, and rest assured, the, the same, uh, goes for any water compliance constituent issue that we might have out in the system. Uh, any other questions about the redwood tanks project? Okay, so I just want to touch upon a few other tank, or, thanks, a few other projects that are pertinent to this service area. And then I want to talk about the AMI project. But we also, I should, let me back up really quick. The redwood tank project is, is seventy-five percent funded through FEMA. So, uh, FEMA is gonna give the district a portion of that three-point-nine million dollars of, of the project cost, uh, in order to replace the tanks because they reduce fire risk. And so we have kind of a double benefit going on here. Reduce prevalence of disinfection byproducts and also bolster, bolster the water supply reliability in terms of fire, uh, which is great. And so FEMA also is partially funding this next project, which is, um, a Hunter's Pump Station replacement project. So at their Hunter's Water Treatment Plant off Hunter Dam Road, we, we have a tap out of the, uh, McKay's Tunnel Tap to the Collierville Powerhouse run by NCPA. And that is our main source of raw water supply to the treatment facility that feeds water to everybody here. That is periodically taken offline for maintenance. And so we have a pump station at the base of the Hunter Dam, uh, that we turn on to then provide raw water supply to the treatment plant to keep everybody in water. The pump station is very old, uh, early sixties. Um, and staff gear up every year and spend a couple weeks verifying that everything's gonna work properly, uh, when we have to turn the pump station on for a few weeks in order to, uh, accommodate the maintenance on the tunnel tap. So FEMA has decided to fund a portion of one-point-eight million dollars to replace the pump station at the base of the dam with a floating pump station that the district can then take out of the reservoir and put back in the reservoir and connect with flex piping to the system as needed. Since a great project, it bolsters the supply reliability overall. Now we don't only, we not only are gonna have one source of supply, but two, which is great. So we're in the design and environmental phase right now. Um, we anticipate moving towards construction next construction season, meaning May through Uh, any questions on that one? Another one I want to highlight, which, um, is, is somewhat linked to White Pines, is the fact that we have, uh, we're working with Calabasas County on a project to install a fire protection tank in Sheep Ranch. So currently Sheep Ranch, we have a, a right around a hundred thousand gallons of potable treated water storage for the community. Um, if there's a fire, that water supply is gone. There's one fire hydrant that's adequately sized off that tank in order to provide fire protection for the community. So CCWD, uh, got together with the county and we are gonna disassemble a bolted steel tank that we have in a different service area and bring it to the site. And then the county's gonna pay to have it reassembled and connected to the raw system so that we can then have a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of raw water supply for fire. So we're working on site improvements now, survey, um, and, and understanding where we're gonna put the tank. Uh, along with that is a, the district has issued a request for proposals, uh, from consultants for a water supply master plan for Sheep Ranch. The system is quite old and it needs to be replaced. So we need, uh, some, an understanding from some experts as to how best to do that. And so there's a proposal out, I believe, um, uh, it's bids are due the second of September, and then we, the district will select a consultant and then move forward with the master plan, which then will direct the phases of the improvements to the distribution system and the raw supply system moving forward. Any questions?
Sheep Ranch, how big of an area is it?
Sheep Ranch, uh, it's
You, you mentioned one fire hydrant.
It's sheep, the question was, is how big of an area is Sheep Ranch? It's not very big and we have forty-eight service connections in Sheep Ranch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's quite small. Um, so the AMI project, some of you might have seen, uh, DC repeaters being installed in your neighborhood. And what these are, are square tubing, Unistrut posts, they're about ten feet tall and they have an antenna on top of them with a battery pack sitting right under the antenna. Uh, we've been placing those, a hundred and fifteen in the county behind fire hydrants. And what those are going to do is they're going to convey automatically read meter information from these meters. Uh, so currently, your meter is manual, meaning we have a staff that drive through your neighborhood and they manually read these meters and they write the numbers down. They put them in what we call a handheld and then they go about their business. Go from meter to meter to meter all day, every day, um, most of the time. Uh, we're going to replace that work effort with automatic telemetry that will grab all of that meter use data and it will send it to the district's administrative office. And the way it does that are through these DC repeaters. Hundred and fifteen throughout the county. It'll convey that information to about twelve AC repeaters that are located on district infrastructure throughout the county, tank sites, pump stations, wastewater lift stations. And then it will send that information to twenty-seven radios that we'll have on fifty-foot towers throughout the county to get all that information down to the office. And really what that means for you is that you will have real-time access to your water use. You'll be able to pull up your meter use data at any time and see how much water you're using hour by hour. And it helps everybody understand water production through the treatment facility versus water use and water loss. And it helps us pinpoint projects to improve the distribution system overall. Staff that have spent the last many years replace, or reading meters, replacing meters, fixing meter boxes will be absorbed into the distribution crews. So the district's keeping all of its staff. And that will actually help us overall, um, to, uh, resolve customer-based issues throughout all of our service areas by adding staff.
Definitely a continual improvement up there. I, I understand they're gonna start down in the Hercules area and work their way up. Have they already started this project?
Great question. So the question was, is, is where are they gonna start with the meter installation? And they're actually gonna start at the highest point up in Big Trees Village and they're gonna start on the twenty-third, the week of the twenty-third. And so next week, uh, uh, basically a Caltrans digital sign will be placed at the entrance to the neighborhood and, uh, subsequently every neighborhood thereafter, providing a, basically, um, a heads up that CCWD staff, a subcontractor, will be going through replacing meters. So they're gonna start at the highest point and what you can anticipate is a knock on the door and, uh, somebody will let you know, hey, we're gonna, is this a good time to replace your meter? It'll take between five and thirty minutes, depending. Some of these are just literally turn a valve off, pull the meter out, put the new meter in, put the antenna through the meter lid and, and go about their business, onto the next meter. Others, you might have to dig, there, there might have been gophers, the meter might be covered. So it's all gonna really kind of depend. Um, if you're not home, these, these folks will just go ahead and replace your meter anyway and then we'll hang a door tag, which we have an example of over here on the table. That works, gonna start with a small crew on the twenty-third, about three folks, and then the subcontractor looks to upsize the crew and build as they learn the system and the service area and understand, um, what they're dealing with out in the field. So the objective is to go, to ramp up to about, I think it's just under five hundred meters a week.
What's the name of the company?
The name of the company is Keystone, the subcontractor. The name of the meter company is Mueller. So Mueller meters are the meters that are gonna be installed in all the telemetry equipment. And then the subcontractor installing the meters is Keystone.
So they'll be clearly marked on their trucks because
Yes.
You know, we have too many.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, well, the comment was, just want to confirm that the subcontractors are gonna have clearly marked trucks. They'll be wearing vests and the answer is yes, they'll be clearly marked, they'll be wearing vests, they'll be identifiable. And, uh, there's, Jessica's phone number is on the door tag and I think mine might be as well, but I think hers is above mine.
Have a comment on hanging something on doorknobs.
Say that again?
I have a comment about hanging things on your doorknob.
Okay, yeah, uh, comment about hanging things on the doorknob.
What it is, is a lot of people are not here. And something hanging on their doorknob for a week or two weeks is a clear sign that there's nobody home.
That's, that's a great comment, yes. Uh, and, and I, actually, this happens during boil water advisories. So I've been out, door tagged a house, they're under a boil water advisory. I've come back two days later to release the boil water advisory, there is the door tag. So we tell staff, take those. If, if they're there, if the old one was there, take them away. Um, it leaves a lot open to conversation if you see a bunch of things hanging on somebody's door. Um, and, and Keystone is adept at, as they go through the neighborhood, they actually have, uh, uh, the crew leader following behind. And we can definitely highlight that with them and let them know, um, folks don't appreciate a, a bunch of items hanging on, door tags, and then
Well, I don't know that we need anything.
Gotcha.
I mean, you're gonna replace a meter that we'll never see and it doesn't impact us and
Right, gotcha. So, so the comment is, is not really sure if we need a door tag. Understood.
Part of the issue is we have to shut the water off. So we do always want to get people's heads up about that.
So what can happen is, if, if you shut the water meter off, periodically there'll be a little burp of air. And so if you turn on your, uh, kitchen sink faucet and you get a hit of air, we want you to know that we're aware. And generally, the meth, the method to eliminate or to reduce that probability is to go to the furthest outside hose bib and turn it on and allow all that air to escape, to escape the system.
I, I just
Yeah, no, I get it.
It's, it's just a small interruption in lives and you're not there, you don't care.
Yeah, got it. Any other questions, comments on AMI? Marita, yes?
Not on that, but on something else.
Okay, yeah.
Um, are, is CCWD, and I'm not sure if it was you or Michael, looking at I have a Calabasas frog in my throat. Taking over wet, I'm getting, uh, several concerns because wells are now going dry because of the drought. Is CCWD, and this is in many places in the county. One, are you considering doing that? And are you, do you have any projects that might take over some of these really small water systems?
That's a great question. I see Michael giving up, I think.
I'm happy to take that one.
Doing microphones here.
So we do have a, a, a program that can transition, help transition customers that have been on private wells, um, into the CCWD system because that can be expensive, um, for the, for the property owner. And so we do have a program that helps, helps facilitate that process. Um, the question is where, you know, it can be challenging in some cases depending on where they are in proximity to our infrastructure. So if it's, if it's really far away from the nearest distribution system, it may or may not be something that we can, that we can help them with. Um, the, the second question about, um, small water systems is also, it's a, it's also a challenging question. Um, and the state is prioritizing, um, they're really pushing with the consolidation or regionalization, as they call it. Um, it, it really has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So some small water systems are just fine and they don't need to, you know, they, they run, you know, very efficiently and effectively. Um, they don't have water supply issues, they don't have staffing issues, and they don't need to be consolidated with anybody else. Um, in other cases, and, and I'm not aware of any up here, uh, it happens more frequently down in the valley, you might have a very small water system that is no longer able to provide safe drinking water to their customers. And those are the ones that are, become a very high priority. Um, and typically a larger, um, receiving entity, a larger neighboring water system, um, will step in and they'll, they'll find a way to address that issue because it becomes a health and safety issue. So for the most part, there are a lot of small water agencies in Calabasas County, um, that we work very closely with in some cases. Um, and, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not aware of any of them that are at that point where they're, you know, they're not, they're no longer able to, to deliver safe, um, reliable water services. And so that, that doesn't mean we want, we may not still have conversations about, you know, what's the most efficient way to serve that community? Is there, um, is there some efficiency that can be gained by consolidating or by collaborating in some other way? We're always open to have those conversations. That's how CCWD has expanded over time, um, in seventy-five years of existence. It's absorbed a lot of small water systems, mutual water companies, small agencies that, um, that were incorporated into CCWD over time. Um, but it has to be done very deliberately. There has to be a process in place of evaluating the infrastructure upgrades that might need to happen to make sure that the water, that we're not taking on something that then becomes a burden to our existing rate pairs. Um, and so that it gets, the infrastructure gets upgraded as it's incorporated into the CCWD system. A good recent example of that is Flying Acres up here, where an assessment was done, it was a small mutual water company that was running that distribution system. They were already dependent on CCWD for water, uh, but they were still running their own distribution system. Engineer's assessment was done, um, to determine the, the, the work that needed to be done to bring it up to standard. And then that work was completed prior to bringing it into the CCWD system. And so now we've, we've taken on that system, but we took it on in a way that made sure that it protects those customers that are connected to the Flying Acres system and it makes sure that our current rate pairs are not burdened by the need to upgrade that infrastructure. So there's a, it's, it's a challenging process or, um, you know, there's multiple steps in that process to make sure it's done right. But that's, that's a conversation we would always be, you know, willing to have and do have periodically with small agencies and, and other small systems. Um, but it's, it would be something that would be, you know, very, if, if we were anywhere close to that happening with any of the small districts in, in the county, um, there'd be a lot of public discussion about it. It would be, like I said, it would work through a process that would be very, um, very transparent and, um, make sure that every, that it's a win-win basically. That's the short of it, so.
So, well, I got what you said, I corrected what wrong. Uh, you said that if a person's well goes out on him and he's way out there, that's someone you couldn't really help, right? It's just going, you know, a dollar amount that you'd be willing to put out?
Yeah, the cost of extending our system might be too, might be, might be prohibitive.
Okay, this is a suggestion. What is, if you come up with a maximum dollar amount that you're willing to go to for any one customer, and you're willing for that particular customer, you'll go for that maximum dollar amount to help him and that he needs to pick up from there on. So you're actually helping
So CCWD typically doesn't pay to extend our infrastructure to provide service to a specific client.
Well, what I'm saying, though, none of this runs for free. It comes to the major, like, one labor, one pay approach. It comes to the major, like, labor, and the air pollution. So with that in mind, uh, so instead of saying, well, you're way far out, we're not gonna be helping you. We can help you up to this point, but you're gonna have to do the rest. So everybody has an opportunity to get help.
So what, we, we have a process that we would go through and identify where the nearest infrastructure is, and we would also, you know, we would work with that property owner, so that if it's not something that CCWD can pay for, there might be other sources of funding that we could help them tap into. You know, if, if it's a situation like that, we would, we would certainly be, um, working with that property owner to see what alternatives are out there.
Just a dumb drought-related question. Let's say somebody's a similar vein, that they have a well that's gone dry. Is there a mechanism that they, let's say they just need a few tanks of water to get them to November or something like that until they make? Do you have a mechanism set up that they can order a tank of water, like order a truckload of water?
They can order a truck, they can order a, a truckload of water.
Okay.
We don't have tanks that we would deliver.
Right, 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 but I may have to put the, but I'm gonna say, yeah, just as a practical drought thing, so you have, it is, you have a system set up if they need to order a tank or truck full of water?
Absolutely.
You do, okay.
And did you have a follow-up question?
We're trying to get housing is become an issue and for just people to live in, workers, right? So we have an accessory dwelling unit. Will CCWD, if an ADU is built in your service territory, will you charge a connection fee for those accessory dwelling units, like you do for the primary dwelling?
So, and so the question is, um, from Supervisor Callaway, that the county is encouraging, uh, trying to find ways to provide additional housing. Accessory dwelling units are an important part of that effort, and so whether or not CCWD charges for the, a second connection for an accessory dwelling unit. And the answer is, there's, there's some state law requirements, um, that give us, uh, square footage minimum. And below that minimum, we can't charge a second connection, and I believe it went up to twelve hundred square feet.
That's the max.
And so anything below that level, um, we can't charge a, a second connection for. It, and it, but it also, it depends on, there's other criteria that, that get factored in there. But if it's a, if it's a, a larger kind of a second house on the same property situation, then, then yeah, we would have to charge a second connection. And that's just to make it fair to all of our customers, make sure that we're not overly, you know, providing more of a service to, to that property owner than we are to anybody else.
So let me repeat what I think I hear you saying. If someone builds an AD accessory dwelling unit on their parcel, and it's under twelve hundred square feet, there will be no connection to?
For the most part, yes, that's, the, the, the twelve hundred square foot limit is, was a state law that was passed a couple of years ago. So there are other, like I said, there are some other criteria there, so if anybody's considering building and they wanna make sure, you know, that's, that's a significant cost, so you wanna know going into a project like that whether you're gonna have to, um, buy another meter or not. So I would definitely encourage you to contact our customer service department, and they could, they could walk you through all the different criteria, but for the most part, yes, that's right.
And that would hold true for sewer as well as water?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? I think you were still talking about projects?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on a couple other, highlight the fact that we have some, uh, show and tell here on the table, and we do have a piece, a section of the Reach One pipeline, Waterline Steel Pipeline, with, uh, some of the tar paper wraps still on it that was replaced. Construction completed October of twenty twenty. Uh, two construction season project, somewhat of a sister project to what we call a Reach Three A, which was in Arnold a couple of years before in, in the town proper. And then this was along Highway Four past Forest Meadows, great project. We had staff on the highway fixing leaks on that pipeline approximately once every six weeks. So, it's great, we have two huge pipeline replacements that have been completed in the past, uh, seven, eight years, and it's just really, it's really been a benefit to the supply reliability overall. And then I just wanna, yeah, yep, go ahead.
That, if you had a pipe like that buried in the ground?
Yes.
You've got water coming in, you actually got water going out of the pipe.
That's right.
And it's mixing with the soil and whatever. Is that a possible source for your damage?
So the, the, the question is, is if you have a pipe that looks the way this pipe looks, and there's leaks on that pipeline, is that a potential source for contamination? And the answer is, it is, yes, it is a potential source. But the reminder is, is that the district maintains positive pressure within that pipeline at all times. So if, if there is a leaky pipe, the water is gonna push debris out. If there's a line break, or if there's an issue with that pipeline, or an isolation, and the pressure is thereby eliminated, you can actually bring debris into the pipeline, and that's when you walk into boil water advisory, emergency notification.
Better pressure drop.
Exactly, right, yep. Uh, and then just one more project I wanna bring to everybody's attention, is CCWD will be working to remove the toolies here at the dam, uh, as late into the season as possible. It's a DSOD requirement, Division of Safety of Dams. So the dam is inspected annually, uh, and the recommendation, uh, from the expert this past year was that we remove the toolies at the spillway. So the district's working through, uh, uh, California Fish and Wildlife to obtain the proper certification so that we can get in there and get those toolies out of there.
When you say you're gonna do it, you just mentioned the spillway. Is that the only place, or you're gonna go down to the other end by the ball field?
So, right now, the focus is the spillway, but the objective is, is to continue the project as far as possible, as far as we can go. That's, that's kind of the focal point, but if we can continue to remove the toolies, we will. Any other questions? Thank you all very much. Uh, I have business cards, feel free to come up and take a look at all the show and tell items. Thank you, Jessica, for bringing those up.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
On the lake itself, how often is the water tested here?
How often is the water tested here at the lake for, say, for bacteria, or?
This was a man of all the birds and everything.
Right, so we test the supply at, so by a long way around the barn, this source of supply is in, ends up at the Sheep Ranch, uh, raw water diversion, and that's where we pull the samples for analysis out of the raw supply.
So what comes out of there, if it was to go bad, you would let people know?
Absolutely, yes. And so, um, so that's, those samples that hap, so the question is, how often is the raw supply sampled here at White Pines? The raw supply from this area that's conveyed to Sheep Ranch is sampled monthly, it's a requirement. So when you pull the treated water samples out in the system, you also pull water samples from the treatment plants and from the raw supply. CCWD works very closely with environmental health to understand, uh, any issues that may be on the horizon or some, or anything that we might have to be on the lookout for in terms of white pines, uh, in terms of water.
And that's before any filtering is done.
Correct, that's correct, yep.
So, one other point I wanna make real quick about all these different projects, um, is just the different, the different sources of funding that is a, uh, something we could spend, uh, the rest of the night talking about if everybody wanted to, a, a bedtime story. But, but just on a high level, um, I think it is important to, to point out how we spend a tremendous amount of effort trying to identify as much funding as we can from as many different sources as we can to, to help fund these infrastructure projects. Because if we had, if we just had to pay for it, um, with the, the revenue that we get from ratepayers and from hydropower and property taxes, the different sources of revenue that the district has, uh, it would be prohibitively expensive. So as Damon mentioned, the, uh, Redwood Tank Project and the Hunter's Raw Water Intake Pump Project are both really important projects. Both of those are, are at least partially grant-funded projects. We have some major infrastructure work going on in West Point, um, this year and next year. That, one of them is a hundred percent, um, grant-funded project, the other one's about fifty percent grant-funded. All different sources, some of that is FEMA, some of that is State Water Board, uh, some of it is DWR, Department of Water Resources. We're, we're cautiously optimistic, um, that we just, uh, we just got a, a one point three million dollar appropriation in a federal appropriation bill, um, thanks to Senator Feinstein for a, a wastewater treatment plant expansion project in Copper, um, and hopefully that's the first of a couple of phases of that project, so that's a very expensive project. The, the meter project is financed through USDA, so really good, um, uh, borrowing terms that, from USDA. That's the same, similar program that Blue Lake Springs Mutual Water Company just financed their distribution system replacement project, and Snowshoe Springs did as well. Same, same type of, uh, arrangement with USDA for that, and there's a grant component to that as well. And so that's just, uh, indicative of all of the different federal and state funding sources that are out there. We, we are aggressively going after every different dollar we can find to help supplement what we get from ratepayers to get these projects done, because like I said before, the projects can't wait. It's just a question of how, how effectively can we fund those projects, um, with the, the resources that we have? So, just wanted to, to point that out, as Damon was going through that list of projects, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about how we're paying for all of it, and, and it's, it's different in almost every case. And it, and it had, you know, it's, it's kind of the, the necessary evil of the game that we have to play to get funding for infrastructure. Thank you, everybody. Jessica's up next.
Okay, so we've talked about a lot of exciting projects, and I just wanna emphasize how cutting-edge our AMI, our new meter project really is. Most water districts throughout the country don't even have those yet, so once we, we have those meters installed, we will be, you know, kind of at the forefront of, of the new, the new way of how water meters work and how water districts function. And with that is, um, is adapting on the customer service side and our customer service software side. So, so Damon talked about how, um, these meters are gonna be, uh, more efficient as far as, um, we won't have to have manpower reading those meters every day. And on the other side, when we receive that data, um, all of you customers are gonna have, um, some positive experiences with it. So, we are, at the same time as we're implementing AMI, we're also transitioning to a new customer service and, uh, finance software called Tyler Technologies. And Tyler will be fully implemented for customers. We finally have a date, which is really exciting, and that is September twentieth. So, once September twentieth is here, um, and you start paying your, your bills, you will be paying through that new customer service software. But I'm gonna hold off on that for a minute, because once, um, you have a new meter, um, on your property, and after September twentieth, we will start working to integrate, um, the meter technology with our, uh, customer service finance, uh, software. And with that, you all will have access to an interactive dashboard for yourself, so you can see your water usage, um, on a daily basis. You can set up alerts so that, um, just like right now, we're living in, in a time of a drought, where we're gonna talk about this soon. You can set up goals for yourself on, on, uh, an exceedance amount, on how much water you wanna use. You can also set up alerts for if you have a water leak. So right now, potentially, you could have a water leak on your property and not know it, and you won't find out until you get a bill, potentially two, two months after that water leak started. But with this new technology, you guys will be receiving an alert, and CCWD will be receiving an alert within potentially forty-eight hours of a water leak occurring. And we can contact you, or you can get an alert via email, um, that you may have a water leak on your property, so that, um, those, those can be fixed quickly, you can save money, and we save water. So, once September, yeah.
Hi, great question.
Yeah.
So, say somebody accidentally leaves their faucet running all night. An outdoor faucet, or an indoor faucet. Will that show up as a water leak?
It could show up as an exceedance of usage and, and set up an alarm, yeah. Yep. Um, so once September twentieth, uh, is here, um, all customers will be, uh, paying, whether you're paying through, um, checks or receiving a paper bill or paying online, um, it will be through our new, um, finance software. So does anyone out here pay online? Okay, so unfortunately, with all of this, the one thing we couldn't do with transferring from our old finance software to our new finance software is transferring all of your, your payment information. So, if you have your account set up and your credit card saved within, um, the CCWD payment, um, website, which is Paymentis, this one time, when we move to that new so- software, so after the September twentieth, when you pay your bill, you will one time have to just set up a new account with your, with your payment information. And then after that, it will be automated, automatic payments after that. We will be pushing a lot of outreach, um, out here in the next couple of weeks, probably starting next week. We'll be posting things on our website, we'll be pushing out press releases, we'll be pushing, putting information in your, in paper bills, and we will potentially even be doing radio ads. So we'll make sure that we try to inform you all on how, um, anything, any process with, you know, changing to this new cu- uh, customer service software will affect you. We don't want this to be a burden, but we are here to help. So, I just wanna let you guys know that that change is happening, uh, but it's really exciting, because soon, when you have that new meter, you are gonna be able to see your water usage in real time, and we'll have those alerts set up. Any questions? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the big topic, which is the droughts.
Okay, so I'm gonna kick this one off really fast, and then I'll turn it over to Brad. So, California, and, and Brad will get into some of the details and some of the numbers. But we are experiencing severe drought conditions. Historically severe drought conditions. CCWD is, is very fortunate that we have, we're close to the source. Um, and for, for the most part, um, we have, we have storage available for us. So, um, I'll give a real quick rundown on some of the things the state has done and how that relates to our, um, circumstances here. Because every water agency is different when it comes to water supply. But as of June fifteenth, the state put every water right holder, um, the water board, um, put every work, right holder in the state on notice that there essentially is no, um, water available for most water right holders to divert out of the streams and rivers in, in California. There was a notice of water unavailability that went out, um, to the, to, to, especially, um, without getting too far into the weeds here, uh, but in California, there's a big distinction between a water right that is, that was established prior to nineteen fourteen. Well, sorry, yeah, a water right that goes back before nineteen fourteen and a water right after nineteen fourteen. So if you hear us talking about pre-fourteen, post-fourteen water, that's the, that's the distinction that we're talking about. The water, the, the state didn't really start regulating surface water diversions until nineteen fourteen, and that's when the-
Did that, did that get passed legal? Did they run that past? Didn't they have to run that? Did it, did it get passed legal, or is it still gonna be open to legal challenges?
You mean curtailing pre-fourteen?
Yeah, because I would, did that have to go by the legis, yeah.
Yeah, so, so John's question is whether or not the state has the authority, because there was no, um, state regulation of surface water diversion prior to nineteen fourteen, does the state water board have the authority to curtail those water right holders that have pre-fourteen water rights, uh, like we do here? And that's a, still a very contentious question, it didn't get resolved definitively in the last drought. And they are, they are going to be doing that again. So, they will get challenged again.
Right.
Um, and we'll see, we'll see how it plays out. But as of June fifteenth, all of the post-fourteen water right holders in the state were notified that there's no water available assist, in the system essentially, to continue diverting. And since then, um, the state water board just last week adopted emergency regulations that give them the authority to now start curtailing water rights. And, and a much shorter process than they would otherwise have to go through. This is what they did during the last drought. They've done some things a little bit better this time around than they did, um, during the last drought. There's still some, there's still some uncertainty. But we have a little bit more of a clear message from the water board than we did last time around about what waters, water rights are affected. The, what we know is, we can't divert any, if you, if you, if you have post-fourteen water rights especially, you can't divert any of that water unless you have stored water upstream somewhere that you're releasing, and then you're diverting stored water. And that's what we do, for the most part, we, we're fortunate to have the ability to do that. But like I said, we have- But like I said, we have six different drinking water systems and they all rely to to some degree on different sources and in some cases completely different sources. We use the Stanislaw, the North Fork of the Stanislaw, we use Big Trees Creek that flows through here. We use the Calaveras River, we use Bear Creek for West Point and the Middle Fork of the McColty for West Point as well. Then we have groundwater down in down in Wallace. So we have different sources of water that are regulated differently all over the county. We do have some pre-fourteen water rights as well. But the the indication that we've received from the state is that the pre-fourteen water rights are going to be curtailed. Probably find out more about that next week. Once the emergency regulations that were just adopted take effect, the state will start rolling out those curtailments of of water rights. Again, if you have stored water available, as we do, you're 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 still able to release that water. So for the Ebbets Pass service area, that water is coming from New Spicer Meadow Reservoir, released into the North Fork Stanislaw and diverted at Hunters. And so we still have the ability to release that water from storage and service service area. The concern, the big concern, and Brad will get into the details of this more, is the impacts on storage, the amount of storage that we'll have carrying over into next year in the event that we have an extended multi-year drought. So we, while we are, we're we're very privileged to have the access to water that we have, we still think it's really important that folks conserve and take this drought very seriously. So that we are doing everything we can to make sure that we're in a good position as we move forward, if if we have an extended multi-year drought like we did before. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brad, our water resources.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. And I'm Brad Arnold, the Water Resources Manager for CCWD. Been at the district now for about a year and a half, working for the Department of Water Resources and other water districts. And I'll start by just reiterating a point that Michael's made, made just to make it clear. This is a very serious drought that we're in. In a lot of ways, we're seeing a lot of patterns and similarities to twenty fifteen, which is arguably the worst year of the last drought period. And in some ways, we were sort of just picked up and teleported right back into that drought. And as many of you will recall at the time, not only here, but in other parts of the state, nobody knew when that drought was going to end. Nobody knew that twenty seventeen, one of our historic wet years were on the horizon. It could have been one of the mega droughts that, you know, people were starting to hear rumblings about. And so that's the mindset that we really need to get back into as a district, as a county and elsewhere in the state, is looking at this as we don't know when this drought's going to end. And we're already hearing rumblings and curtailments, as Michael talked about. And so there's some important changes and things going on now. We don't have the preceding years before twenty fifteen, last time, that were already dry and put us in a vulnerable position. We're already sort of back in twenty fifteen. And so that being said, there are two handouts in your packet in here that I think are worthwhile to illustrate just where we're at compared to the prior years. And I'll step through those. For those that are online, we'll make sure to get those available on our website as we move forward. The first one is the US Drought Monitor. And it's important to point out August twenty twenty-one where we're at right now versus August of twenty fifteen. You'll see that most of the state in both cases was an extreme or exceptional drought, that deep dark red versus that even darker red in most parts of the state, including Calaveras County, that's pointed out on there. So there's not a lot of differences statewide of where we were at, again, in the worst part of the drought versus where we are now. Again, we're sort of just picked up and teleported right back to twenty fifteen in some ways from a hydrology perspective. And so it's going to be important to monitor that as we continue to move forward in the months of twenty fifteen. And then as we try and get, figure out what kind of water year we're heading into in twenty twenty-two. Heaven forbid it's another really dry year, we could start to see this sort of thing get worse. And again, could start to really see even more extreme curtailments, even more sorts of extreme guidelines and conservation orders, that sort of thing coming from the state. The second handout that you'll see in there is actually generated from something that we call the Public Water Data Packet. For those of you who aren't familiar, on our website, we have a daily automatic update packet of information that's generated where it looks at the reservoir levels throughout the county, both at Spicer Meadow, all the way down to Barones, all the way up to Salt Springs on the north side of California. And it even looks at accumulated precipitation levels compared between different years. And again, it's updated daily, made available on our website. What we've shown that in the handout here is is the Ebbets Pass accumulated precipitation, just to compare how much rain, how much precipitation did upper Ebbets Pass get compared to prior years. And you'll notice that the red line on there of twenty twenty-one this year is below even the dry twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. In twenty fourteen, fifteen, I believe it was around thirty inches of water that was received right now, we're at about twenty-eight. I don't recall the percentage of average, but it's somewhere, I think, around sixty if I recall correctly. But that's well below average for this time of year. And so we're looking at a historic dry year. Again, I want to reiterate this over and over that we are in some ways back in the last drought, just in terms of intensity.
Please excuse me, but aren't you kind of reiterating what we already know?
In some ways, yeah, just trying to prove out what we already know.
What I'm getting at is my butt is getting tired of sitting here.
Sure.
And it's, a lot of this is repetitious, you know, we know it, we've been taught this over the years. We live with it, we know it, and let's get to the point, instead of just chit chat.
Sure, let's get to the point in Calaveras County here for our sixth service area. Let's talk about New Spicer Meadow, the primary for Ebbets Pass service area there. Right now, it's around seventy, seventy-five thousand acre feet on there. Not as bad as twenty fifteen, where it was well below that, around fifty thousand acre feet, moving towards thirty thousand acre feet at the end of the year. In other words, decreasing rapidly throughout twenty fifteen, where it was unknown of what type of year they were going to go into afterwards. We don't know that it's going to get so bad this year, but I want to bring up Michael's point again, that right now, we are relying on storage. Think of it as a bank account, we can only draw what we have stored already. There's no new income, no new diversions coming into that storage. And so we want to play carefully, because we don't know what next year's is going to work with. And that's why I wanted to bring up those graphs, because we just simply don't know what is going to happen after this historic dry year. And as we're through ours to the other service areas, we are also borrowing borrowing on storage levels. New Hogan obviously being the big one for Jenny Lynn. But this becomes a problem for diversion areas like West Point and others that we need to be aware of in the system. So just to reiterate on here, we are okay now, we are in a stage one from our board, generally okay voluntary efforts, try and conserve if possible under a voluntary fifteen percent mandate from the governor in California, not the strict mandates that we received during the last drought. But at this point, please, please conserve and try and help us make, stretch that storage out as far as we can, because we don't know where is the future is going to hold at this point.
So I have a question. What are these initials in the square, the little square?
Right, so the data packet, which admittedly, I wasn't sure if everyone was familiar with or not, pulls from precipitation data available and collected by the State Department of Water Resources. So I developed an automated tool that goes out and pulls that precipitation data from each of those three, those three-digit or three-letter stations, rather, and aggregates it together into an accumulated plot over time. And it does that for four different parts of the county on the data packet. You're presented with one here that influences this service area.
What are they, he says, what are they?
I don't know the exact stations offhand, but I can tell you that if you go to the California Data Exchange Center, which is where all this originates from, you'll be able to type those in and find out exactly. I think a couple of them are Big Trees Precipitation Station, there's a few others that are, as you get closer to Lake Alpine, and it's just inverse distance where they get definitely.
B L S normally means Blue Lake Springs.
That could be one of them as well, yeah.
At what point would CCWD institute mandate water conservation? Is there, when you're at whatever?
Stage two alert.
Yeah. So so currently, we are in stage one, which is advisory. So with stage one advisory, that is a voluntary stage. And right now, we are encouraging fifteen percent conservation compared to water usage from last year. However, when we move into the next stages, so stage two and above, those are those are mandated stages. So it's no longer voluntary, these are things that that the district will be mandating. When we move into those stages, the board does have authority to adjust that that flow chart that we have there, which is out of our water shortage contingency plan. But but right now, we are in the voluntary stage. And as far as the state level is concerned, that's that's what the state is encouraging as well, is the voluntary conservation, hoping that with the voluntary conservation of fifteen percent, we will be able to to save enough water. But, you know, with with how things are looking, most likely, we'll be moving into a mandated stage.
Excuse me, one of you. How are we going to get this notice or notification out to everybody? I know we can't just go hang notices on doors, because we decided that's not a good idea, especially for the folks that are here all the time. But is it going to be done through a mailing list, where somebody will get something to mail saying, hey, we're in a stage one situation, we need to conserve water? I mean, because we're here in it, but we could use the Neighborhood Watch database to get out to certain people, but that's not everybody, so.
Great, that's that's a wonderful question. So right now, with stage one, it's just, what the district is doing right now is we're posting things on our website. We're we're talking at venues like this as well, and we're pushing it out on social media. We are also collaborating with the other water agencies throughout the county. You all may remember Calaveras Conserves from the previous drought, it was formed in twenty fifteen. And we are actively meeting with all water agencies to push out a similar message as a cohesive group. But once we, if we do move into a higher stage, which is no longer this voluntary stage, we will be doing more active outreach. Right now, we're putting stuff in our our bills, so when you get a bill, it it does say that we're we're encouraging fifteen percent conservation. But once we move into a more, a higher stage, we'll be pushing, you know, we'll be pushing out press releases, we'll be pushing out mailers, you know, all the, all those things. And you'll even see in stage two, one, two, two big things where I think people are going to start seeing is restaurants only serving water upon request, as well as lodging, you know, those kinds of things. So so once, this stage one is kind of a preliminary stage, but once we get into that next one, that's where the the outreach is really going to come out.
But I think what the question is, how will we know? And we're going to be waiting to for word from the state.
Right, so the first step is the board, the board has to to vote to to move us into the next stage. And then once that happens, that's when immediately we'll put out press releases. We'll 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 work with the media to to get the customers aware of what's going on and pushing things out on social media.
One other quick point I want to touch on. There's a, one issue that we are tracking closely is the fact that CCWD water can, our water demand has actually increased pretty significantly in the last year especially. Twenty twenty was an above-average year for us when we look at kind of the last ten years of average water. We were, we were doing a good job of decreasing water production from our treatment plants. And a lot of that had to do with these leak mitigation efforts. As we replace old pipelines, as we replace leaky service lines, we're able to decrease, you know, the amount of water that has to get treated to to serve our customers. But it was also due to the awareness that was raised during the last drought and people changed their landscaping and changed other behaviors. And so we we had actually seen a decrease that some conservation levels that were, that we maintained coming out of the last drought. What we're seeing since since last year is actually an increase in water consumption, even though we've continued our leak mitigation efforts and our infrastructure replacement, and our customers are still conserving water and and for the most part, you know, using water wisely, as we like to say. But we've seen population increase. We've seen a conversion of short-term rentals to long-term rentals or vacation home to full-time residency. And then we also, as a, it's a different, sort of a different function of the drought, is people do water their landscaping more. So I think those are the two drivers right now that we are are watching is is the increase in population, but also an increase in in landscape irrigation. There's not much we can do about the first one. But we can make sure that we're being really cautious with our landscape irrigation. Timing is important, as you'll see, drought stage two actually becomes mandatory. No, no landscape irrigation between ten a.m. and six p.m., because it's it's not as efficient. You're going to lose some of that water to evaporation, especially with how hot the summer has been this year, which I think is the other thing that's driving more water use this year. And and so it's just less efficient to irrigate during that time of day. And then maybe scaling back a little bit and and, you know, not watering as much as you might might prefer, but, you know, hopefully extending, not not having to, you know, rip everything out, but just being as, just being conscious of that. When you see our our sprinklers going on, our landscape irrigation systems going on, making sure that we're doing it as as cautiously as possible, because our concern is, since we're completely dependent on stored water right now, you know, that we have, we're saving as much water to carry over into next year as possible, not knowing what this one year will hold. So those are some things, I I think the landscape irrigation right now is probably the the biggest impact we could have as a community on the water demand that we've seen at CCWD. I think what we've learned is our our water efficiency continues to improve as we reduce the leaks in the system. But even if you're more efficient with your water, if population increases, your water use is still going to increase. And that's fine, that's what that's what we're here for, is to serve water. But we just want to encourage people to be, to be really conscious of that landscape irrigation and and be as responsible with it as we can. Any questions about droughts, water sources, water conservation? Brad and I have been hearing about all this stuff all day long.
I've noticed a difference in the water flow rate at my house, the faucets.
Water pressure?
Yes. Have you reduced it?
That wouldn't, I don't think that's a change that we made, no.
Because I checked the water meter and there's no leak. I'm just wondering if it's just more people on there.
So so one thing to to look at is whether or not you have your own pressure-reducing valve on your house? You do? So you might want to turn turn the dial a little bit, it it might be getting to the end of the slide. So you'll also often see pressure fluctuations if you have your own pressure-reducing valve on your home. And it'll start giving you that signal.
But it improves in some parts of the day.
Say that again?
It improves in different parts of the day. It almost seems like everybody's taking a shower, and I've never noticed the water flow rate drop.
So there, so there, those are important things for us to know. So if you feel free to call the Customer Service Department, because we often have, and we have over one hundred in the Ebbets Pass service area, pressure-reducing valves, pressure-sustaining valves, all different sorts of control valves throughout the distribution system. And if one of those is acting up, you will see it in a in a fluctuation in pressure, so.
I was talking to a neighbor lady walking by, and I asked her if her water pressure is dropping. She says, no, I've heard that.
Yeah.
From several people.
Yeah, so so sometimes the way the pressure valves work is they're demand-based, so they they might open up when they, when there's a reduction in pressure, so there's an increase in flow. And and oftentimes, they get fouled up or they're slow to operate or, you know.
They get stuck, yeah.
Yeah, they get stuck, right. And so if if you call the Customer Service Department, they can issue a service request for our staff and the field, distribution field staff will go out and they can make adjustments. We can put pressure gauges on your home, put them on our equipment, and really pinpoint what the issue is.
Yeah, because I know there's no leak.
Right, yeah, yeah, got it.
Is there a lifeline to P R Vs?
A lifeline to P R Vs, or a basically, so yes, there is. A lifespan, right? Is there a lifespan to pressure control valves, pressure-reducing valves? Yes, there is. Generally, you want to replace the diaphragm and a pressure-reducing valve every two years. So if you can imagine a seat, I'm going to try to describe this with a microphone. Imagine a seat with a with a disc on the bottom of it, and that disc is rubber. And over time, as it opens and closes like this to allow water to flow underneath it, that seat ages. And so if it fails, it depends on the the unique constraints of the system, but it can fail wide open and you can see a massive increase in pressure, that's the worst-case scenario for. That's the worst-case scenario for us. So we generally try to replace those every couple of years. And then there's all sorts of control lines, very small, quarter-inch, three-quarter inch, that we, that fail over time, and we work to replace.
Because we went through a big mass replacement of PRVs, not, you know, a couple of years ago, I think. From in the community. Remember, remember that?
Pressure-reducing valve ONM is a large component of most distribution crews' work efforts. Like I said up here, it's, it's a massive undertaking. And hats off to our staff that work in the field up in the Ebbets Pass service area, because they are very adept at diagnosing the issue and working to resolve the issue quickly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that was the, that was the topic we wanted to cover today. So if anybody has any questions, if you want to hang out, we'll be available, or you can always, there's contact information here for us. Y'all know how to get ahold of Bertha, and she knows how to get ahold of me.
I got your number.
We got cookies, we got some drinks in the ice chest, so feel free to enjoy those. And really, again, thank you, thank you all for taking the time to be here today. We always learn from you guys during, doing these events. So we're going to keep doing it on a regular basis. We were in Copper a few months ago. After this, we'll probably go to West Point in a couple of months, and then start over again back down in Valley Springs, and just kind of do a, make it a regular thing. Because I think this is the best way for us to communicate what's going on at CCWD, and to get input from customers as to, you know, what are we missing? And make sure we don't have any blind spots. Really appreciate everybody doing here, and have a good evening.